Okay, there we go. Hello. I'm good. What's up?
Are we allowed to have meetings today?
Um, actually, we're on Zoom, but.
Oh, you guys are?
But if you're gonna. Just to. You just want to observe. All right. If I'm wrong.
Thank you.
We'll. And we'll take care of it next week. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, May 26th, 2021, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners's to order. This meeting is being held under the executive order on remote participation. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. That order was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded, all the state of emergency is terminated. Thank you. This meeting is called to order. I'm going to call a roll call. Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Stady.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is here. We have a quorum. First, item number three, minutes of the open session meeting of July 19th for approval.
I'm all right with the minutes. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the open session meetings, minutes of May 19th, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Number four, public comment, public correspondence. I understand we have some folks that want to address us today, so in no particular order, I'm going to open this up. If anyone wants to take advantage of this item on the agenda, item number four, which is public correspondence or public comment. I'm just going to open it up in no particular order. I cannot see everyone because I have a disclosure on my screen. It says this meeting is being recorded, and I can't seem to get rid of it, so.
I would like to speak.
Sure, I can't see who it is. I will need your name, just because.
This is Leah McGahey.
Okay, great.
I'm speaking through an American Sign Language interpreter.
Yes.
Honorable Shea, Honorable Collins, Honorable Stady. I am a registry employee of almost nine years and on the AFSCME Local 2417 Executive Board. On behalf of the registry and maintenance employees, we are very grateful for Register O'Donnell's generous COVID-19 pandemic pay proposal. We have worked through 14 months of the stressful COVID-19 pandemic. We were asked to adjust and alter our work environment, and we pulled through and succeeded. We were asked to sacrifice our lives to help and support the registry, stay open, and remain in full operation, and we did. And in turn, the registry has brought in more revenue than ever and is still open today. This revenue helped to keep Norfolk County stay on top through serving the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in a time of need. I once again want to thank Register O'Donnell for his gracious proposal. With that said, I would like to encourage the commissioners to take a moment to vote on and hopefully approve the proposal today. This is not something that can be continually pushed back as the Norfolk County Advisory Board must vote on this proposal on June 9th. If voted on today, we can move forward. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, Commissioners. This is Linda Austin, long time, but not the first time. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can the Commissioners hear? Hello, Linda.
Hi, hello. Good to be back with you. Just want to speak to the register's proposal that creates incredible goodwill for our employees. And inasmuch as I recognize pandemic pay in general has been distributed at the beginning or throughout the pandemic, and this is coming at the end of the cycle, yet still that $2,000 is a sweet bonus, having struggled through the pandemic. And having listened into a meeting a few weeks ago when the register put forth his proposal and hearing the Commissioner's response, I appreciate the intent of including the Aggie teachers and administrators. We know it's a most noble profession, and there was mention of the golf folks. I love the game. I have a tee time on Saturday. But the register's message, I think, is for those groups, as we understand it, who intersect with the registry. We appreciate that he wants to fund this through the excise fund. And frankly, having that kind of money in an excise fund and knowing it can be used for such a payout, we'll probably be looking ahead to the future when we're still digging out from this pandemic. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak under the public comment section of our agenda on this subject? Okay. Last call on the public comment section of our agenda, item number three. Any subject at all? Leah?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know I have many people standing behind me. Perhaps you can see them or not, but they are here in support of the comments that I've just given. I do want to let you know that. We are here, and we support the comments I have made. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I, for the record, will say that I have a few registry employees here also at the Commissioner's office observing this exercise.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. At what point do you want us to weigh in? Or are we going to be doing that later on? I know we have counsel's advice, and I know that we are taking these letters very seriously. I think Bill Buckley or someone sent out a letter to the employees yesterday, which was great. Do you want us to weigh in now or later on? I think it's just your call, your chairman.
Um, well, I would say that if we don't do it now, that we can still discuss it under Old Business. Or we can discuss it on topics that Chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Although I was aware of both these comments.
I didn't want to stop the flow. I thought we wanted to talk about it at the end, and that'd be fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, again, last call on the public comment session. If there are other people on here who have other public comments, now would be the time to bring it to our attention. Okay. We will discuss it per Commissioner Stady's request later in the meeting. Number four, Facility Maintenance Capital Improvement Report and Corona Update Superintendent McGowan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Once again, I'm happy and pleased to inform you that there was no COVID-19 issues to deal with, which is a good sign. And I know we're happy about it, but I'm still continuing on with the normal routine of spraying Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And I'll continue that on until I hear different. I mean, I don't see any reason to stop it. And I'm going to keep on with the same procedures, the wipe downs and everything else, until I hear from, you know, a few. I know at some point, they're going to be going to be opening the buildings. I know that, I don't know when, and I'm sure that you'll let me know. But on on the maintenance part of it, we have a problem. I have the boiler company in here doing the PMs on all the buildings. They're here in Dedham, and they found a problem with the boiler, number one boiler, I believe, in Registry of Deeds. The sections that, you know, create the steam, there's about 10 of them, I believe, in a row. And I think there's about six of them that failed. They're rotting out, and this would be the time to replace them. In the process of getting the price on doing it, I haven't got it yet because the guy that's going to give us the price, he was here the other day, but we have to get the covers off it. And on the top, he wants to look at the top and make sure that they've rotted all the way through, which they are. But my plan is, I told them to, there's 10 sections. There's about four to five that are really bad. So if we're going to do it, I want a price on replacing all 10 of them. And we could keep, you know, the good ones, we'll keep aside. We'll store them because if the other boiler has the same problem, we can just use them on that. I mean, I'm not going to throw them away or anything like that. The rusted ones out. I'll have them discard those, but the good ones, we'll keep as a backup. And I have other issues going on, but they're just regular maintenance issues. And I know you have a lot of business to take care of, so that's about it for me, unless you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions to John? Nice job, John.
Thank you, John. Just, Mr. Chairman, very quickly through you and for the, I think what our audience said, I have to identify myself. This is Commissioner Stady. Anyways, I'm asking a question concerning Stoughton again. Any more information on that, John, on Stoughton District Court?
I believe that I've had the engineer, the engineer went down there, the mechanical engineer. As I told you before, they were originally installed by D-CAM, and they were installed wrong. I mean, they were put on backwards. So when they initially, they had to spin that around, which was years ago. I'm talking probably 18 years ago. Now, the new system that are coming in will not line up with the ductwork that's, you know, because it was, you've got to understand, it was originally put in backwards. So they spun it around. They had to make new ductwork slices onto the into the unit to make it work, and it didn't work at full capacity.
I got it.
We have a chance to do it right now. We're going to spin the unit and sit it on the pads that's there now, the steel pads. And from what I understand, the mechanical engineer wants to get a structural guy in there and give him the okay to do that for it to carry the weight of the unit. It shouldn't be that big of a deal, I don't think, anyway. Because if it supports it likewise, it'll support it crosswise. You might have to put some, you know, a new something on the ends to hold up the ends. You put some pads on. And it's not a big deal. I don't think it is. It's a big deal to change the ductwork, and we've got to get a price on that. And the sooner the better because we want to get this thing done. I want to get it completed.
Yes.
And get it ready for the new units that will be in, I understand, sometime in July, hopefully before then. But when they do come in, you want to be ready for them. And that's what we're trying to do. But as far as I know, Nancy probably might know a little bit more about the architect. I mean, the engineer was supposed to get back to her. I think she was waiting for a call from him. And that's about all I know, Commissioner.
Okay, great for you.
But I am, I'm keeping on top of it. I know Nancy is. She's been working on it, and it's in the engineer's hand now. Maybe we can, maybe she can get a contact with him today and tell him to get moving.
All right, I appreciate you.
That's where we stand right now. I mean, we are working on it, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. That's all I want to make sure, just checking in. Thank you, John. I have one quick question, John. This work at the Registry of Deeds, is that when you get the price? Or is this work going to be done by our regular preventive maintenance folks that we? So they're familiar with?
Yes, Commissioner. IBS is, we'll be pricing it out, and we have to get it done. They did the PM. That's why we do the PM on them. They chair the boilers right down to go all over them and find out if there's anything. We want to make sure that we're ready for the next heating season.
Right, okay.
But they'll be doing it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good holiday.
Thank you very much.
Be careful and behave yourself.
Number six, appointments. We do have a 1:30 bid opening, so I'm going to go to some of the other business here before 1:30. I think we can take care of a few other items, and then we have our bid openings. Next item is Old Business. Do we have anything under Old Business? Okay, number eight, personnel matters for consideration. We have several at Wallaston Recreation Facility, Registry of Deeds, Engineering Department, and the Agricultural School. I think we can take it in four different motions, the recreation facility being first.
I would move the the notice of contingent employment for the two individuals, Liam Donovan and Joseph LaRosa, as stated in the memo to us with both dates effective 5/26/21.
Second. All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Next?
I would move the notice of resignation of Judge Sullivan of Milton as Assistant Superintendent at the rate of pay listed effective 5/26/21.
Second. All in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. Registry of Deeds is next, Commissioner.
I'd move notice of appointment of Kelly Connors of Waymouth, Mass., the senior clerk, and Susan Robis, Robis? Of Dedham, Mass., replacing Karen Bennett, both to be effective 6/14/21.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Engineering Department.
Very pleased to move the appointment of Patrick Higgins of West Rossbury as Land Surveyor, interim engineering director at the stated rate of pay effective 6/21/21.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Agricultural School, a lot of resignations, and I believe some of it is generally of summer help.
Question, Mr. Chairman, not to be, again.
I know what the question is. I don't believe you have to read them all.
Okay, no, actually, no.
I think just category.
No, actually, no, to be polite. I'm just curious. I have no problem with the Wallaston and the Registry of Course and Engineering. With the Aggie School, where we're trustees, why aren't these appointments brought to the trustees' fraction and then sent to us? That's my first question. And my second one, I ask respectfully, in view of the budget and the budget problem we have at the Aggie, should we be appointing anybody? Shouldn't we hold everything right now until we have our meeting next week and get that squared off? I'm just talking about the appointment. I have nothing to do with the individual. I'm just asking a question. It's kind of curious that we're putting people on when we have a budget problem there.
Well, the first part, why are they on there? I can find out. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say because it's always been there because I don't like to say that.
Yeah, thank you.
The second point may have to defer to Michelle as far as these resignations. I think it's an issue of keeping, cleaning the books up, but not all of them are resignation. Summer wage increases.
Right, right.
Some are temporary employees. I believe they work there in the summer.
Yes.
And one or two are full-time employees, so.
I have no problem with resignation. I have no problem at all. I can move those. The wage increase and the appointment, I'm just concerned. And I thought.
Yeah, can I jump in, Joe?
Certainly, Commissioner.
Okay, so it says notice of minimum wage increase. It's a minimum wage increase. That's no big deal.
No.
With regard to the appointment, I think the Aggie School and Michelle can help us. I think they're down, what, four custodians, Michelle?
That's correct.
So we need to hire a custodian. It's essential. But the reason that this doesn't come to the trustees, Dick, is because the trustees don't have the ability to hire and fire at the Aggie. We don't. None of the trustees do. That comes down to the superintendent. She's the only individual that has the ability to hire and fire at the school. However, we are the personnel board. The county commissioners are the personnel boards, and that's why it comes to us. So this is actually running through Tammy at the school and coming to us in that way.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
May I make a comment?
Thanks for the clarification. Thank, I appreciate that.
May I add a clarification as well?
Yes, Michelle.
Commissioner Stady, there's a lot of CEC student workers, and the student workers are paid for a grant as well. So just so you know that that's another part of this.
Could I ask this in the future? Wouldn't that be, I'm asking as a new commissioner. That would have been helpful if I had known that. That's all. I'm concerned about the Aggie School. I know we all are, we all are. And I'm concerned about the budget, and I'm seeing all these people coming and going and up and down. I'm thinking, woo, are we doing the right thing? And that's all I ask politely. If I had known they were coming from a grant, I would have had no problem. And Peter, thank you. Oh, no, 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 listen, it's a learning curve. I'm fine. I'll say I'll move all of them today, and let's get it done. But that helps me a great deal. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we can move them all in one block if you're okay with that, Dick.
I agree.
Do I need to read them all, or?
No, you need to say as presented.
Wow, okay. I'll tell you what, Mr. Chairman, I'll make an only motion. Let's give it a shot. I'll move the appointment, the minimum wage increase, and also the resignations as written in a memo to us on this date for the individuals as listed in that memo. And I believe the dates of effectiveness vary from 6/321 to 7/121 accordingly. I believe they're all encompassing on that range there. How's that for motion?
I'll second the motion. It's a nice motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve notice of appointments, notice of minimum wage increases, notice of resignations, all at the Agricultural School 19 and number as presented for today's budget. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
All right.
Let's do number nine, payroll expense warrant for approval.
Okay, coming right up, Mr. Chairman. All right, I've got the warrant list of 5/26/21. First motion, Mr. Chairman, 21-47, payroll of county in the amount of $137.647.61. So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous, next.
The motion, Mr. Chairman, I would move the 5-20-21, the Wallaston Recreational Facility sales tax in the amount of $2,306.43. So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye, unanimous. The third one, Commissioner?
Third motion, Mr. Chairman, move the motion of 5/421, the expense warrant of the county in the amount of $553,551.98. So moved.
Second.
All right.
All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Number four.
Yes, sir. I will move 21-11A, the expense of the school in the amount of $24,467.21. So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much.
Okay.
Number 10, we do have a bid opening at 1:30. I'm going to ask our procurement director, Nancy Rockwell, to join us. Two-part bid today. One is school bus transportation for a period of three years at the Agricultural High School. And number two, electrical work on an as-needed basis for a period of three years at Norfolk County Agricultural High School. I'm going to step aside, but I'll be right here with Nancy opening the bids.
Hi, first, we have the school bus transportation at Agricultural High School for a period of three years. We have one bid, which is received from Holmes Transportation out of Norfolk, Mass.
Is that our present?
It is our present vendor, yes.
It is or isn't, I couldn't hear you.
It is.
It is.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. The per live mile price regular day is $4.98 a mile for furnishing school buses for extracurricular activities, athletic trips, and field trips is per live mile zero. Waiting time price, $50. Minimum price, $400. Options, we were asking for security cameras on the bus. That's $0 per bus. It looks like they are keeping their prices the same for the three years. Next, I have electrical work as needed. These are all for the Agricultural High School. And we have a bid from Steel Light Body out of Walpole, Mass. They are the present on-call electrician. They have bid. Regular time for a licensed electrician, first year, $88.42. Second year, $91.13. Third year, $93.84. For an electrician's helper per hour, first year, $35.82 an hour. Second year, $53.6. Third year, $56.28. Overtime, licensed electrician per hour, $132.63. Second year, $136.69. Third year, $140.76. Electrician's helper per hour overtime, first year, $53.75. Second year, $79.59. Third year, $84.42. Discount on parts, 10%. Carpentry work as needed. We have a bid from AGM Services. And they are out of Proctor, Mass. They have bid regular time carpenter per hour, $71.89. First year, second year, $73.14. Third year, $74.39. Carpenters helper per hour, first year, not applicable, all not applicable. There is no helper. Overtime per hour, Overtime per hour. One hundred and seven dollars eighty-three cents first year, one hundred and nine dollars seventy, seventy-one cents second year. Hundred and eleven dollars fifty-eight cents third year. Again, no carpenters helper and no discount on parts. We have no bids for the on-call plumber as needed. My office. Yeah, it should be. I can run. I'm quick. I'm right here.
All right.
A brief interruption because Nancy thinks there's another envelope in her office, which is probably the plumbing bid, but she's gone to check. She'll be right back.
Joe, Mr. Chairman, can we vote, can we vote against today? That bus was the only better, and it was same as last year with no rate increase. Can we vote it? Or we have to wait?
That's a question I've asked in the past, and I've been, I've been told we need to wait. However, I feel the same way as you do.
Yeah.
Especially where they're a present vendor and they're in the county.
Yeah.
Because the due diligence has been done before. If this, if it's competition, I definitely believe we should take it on advisement, but let's ask Nancy when she's back.
I was just thinking that, you know, get one more thing.
These, um, these skilled positions of plumber, electrician, and. I believe was the other one, are only in an emergency. Things that can't handle by the norm, the maintenance staff.
Got it.
And. Based on some other issues this morning, we, I was looking at. We always have an on-call person.
Good, good.
Stuff that either happens in the middle of the night, but our people do respond to, but sometimes we need the outside. And it hasn't been a terrible bit. I looked at the last five years. Eighteen was busier than the, the last four years, but, or three after that, but it's been, it's been more than reasonable, but when you need them, you need them. And. You need them now. Nancy's coming back. Wait a minute. Take your time, Nancy. We're talking about.
We do have, one bid did come in this morning from Industrial Burner Systems. It is in the folder on my desktop. Can I come back with that?
Okay. She's sure that we received another bid this morning, so she's gone to look for it. If there's no objection, I'm gonna move forward on some. Items that I think we can take care of quickly, and as soon as Nancy returns, we're gonna go back to the bid opening. If there's no objection.
No, no problem.
Oh, here she comes. We got it.
All right.
Never a dull moment here.
I, I apologize. It was on top of the cabinet waiting to go into the file cabinet. This is for the. Servicing of burner and burner controls for the Agricultural High School. We have a bid from Industrial Burner Systems. They have bid. This is the pricing for the servicing of all the burners. First year, thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Second price, second year price, sorry, thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Third year price, fourteen thousand fifty dollars. For repair work. Other than. Servicing the burners if needed. The hourly rate is first year, a hundred and seven dollars. Second year, one hundred and nine dollars. Third year, one hundred and eleven dollars. Overtime first year, one hundred and thirty dollars. Second year, one hundred and thirty dollars. Third year, one hundred and thirty dollars. Saturday or Sunday, first year, one hundred and thirty dollars. No change for the second and third year. Replacement parts as necessary, twenty-five percent. Discount off parts. And that are, that is all the bids for today.
Okay, Nancy, stay with us for one minute.
Yep.
Commissioner Stady has a question that I've asked in the past. Where there's singular bids on these services, and the bid comes from someone that was most recently doing the work, and we've vetted them and worked with them in the past. Do we need to take it under advisement or can we award it today?
Um, you'd have to wait for a week. You want to have the paperwork ready?
Okay. There is a requirement. We wait commissioner of the week for the paperwork. However, we, we'll have them on next week.
Yes.
Ain't no problem. Just ask.
Okay.
We're all learning. That's good.
And, and sometimes.
You have to wait a week for, no matter what, huh? You have to wait a week?
Well, no, it has to be, Commissioner Stady, it's Nancy through the chairman. This is, to award these contracts today is not on the agenda, and the agenda must be posted ahead of time. So that's why it would be for, you know, we have to wait till next week.
That would make sense. Okay.
Okay. And if it was several people and the, the due diligence took longer, you.
I'd be.
It's further weeks.
Check references.
Okay, okay.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, if we wanted to, though, looking ahead, just thinking, if we wanted to, we could put on the warrant or on the agenda if we wanted to, hey, to open bids and to award if proper. We can't wait. It's on notice. You know, if you wanted to, you could put both.
I, I agree with you, especially when, well, lawn repeats and people already vetted. Nancy's got a rhyme up.
Oh, it's trying to move government along. That's all. It's not.
I know.
I appreciate it.
No big deal. No big.
Also, also, Commissioner, a copy of each bid goes out to the individual department whose department requested new service or product. So that could not go out until after the bids were opened. And. So it is advisable just to wait for the next meeting.
Who was it that said the wheels of government turn slow? And I understand. That's all right. I'm fine. It's good. It's good. No big deal.
Okay.
We'll give, we'll wait a month and try it again.
Yeah, there we go. Keep trying, Joe.
Thank you.
All right.
Contract awards, we have none today. Number twelve, we're receipt of a mass department of transportation taking order.
Yeah.
One for Bellingham and one for Sharon. They're in your packet. It's pretty straightforward. I don't know who's gonna explain this. Michelle Labardini.
I don't have anything on that. I'm sorry.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I gave a whirl at it, but I think Mike DeJoden sent a little letter in terms of what we had to say.
Yeah, he did. I can't find it, no.
I, I got it someplace here, too. But one of them had, I hate to say it, our late and beloved Mr. O'Brien's name on there. I would have to be corrected. One has your name, and the other one has Commissioner O'Brien. So we'd have to kind of fix that, but, you know, otherwise we're okay.
Okay, let me, let me read it. Maybe we can.
Yeah.
Take it on. Maybe we can handle it today. This is from Mike Drouin, dated May twenty-first.
There you go.
Says, please see the attached Mass Department of Transportation documents. One PDF is a taking on Mechanic Street in Bellingham, and the other PDF is an alteration on. Masco Wonka Street in Sharon. The third PDF is a certification of receipts of the plans and documents by the Office of the County Commissioner. Once the chair signs and dates the receipt, which I will do, you can make a copy and give it to me in the originals, and I will take care of the sending it back to DOT. The brief outline is. The Mass DOT taking on Mechanic Street in Bellingham dated February third, twenty twenty-one, has been received by the County Commissioner, and is a certification of receipt will be signed and dated. Two, the Mass DOT alternate layout plan number eight seven eight oh on Mask One, a cut street in Sharon, dated April seventh, twenty twenty-one, has been received by the County Commissioner, and the certification of receipt will be signed and dated by the chairman. And I'm looking at everything signed by Walter Lynch, Deputy Director of the Right-Away Bureau, requesting our signature with all the accompanying plans. On notice to abut us, et cetera. I believe. That this is in order based on Mike's memo. I'd like to move it along with your permission, and we'd probably take a vote. And this is the second one I've received. We took care of the other one, probably in February, and I remember with Bill Buckley and I went over to talk to Mike about it, and he reviewed that one, too, and I signed it and sent it on its way, but. Unless there's a reason to hold this up, I believe everything is in order.
Yeah, same, Mr. Chair. They end up going into a, a plan draw that, that Mike and his colleagues.
Right.
Proceed of, and, and they have, if people want to look back at them, but it's.
Oh, I see the one that's, that has Commissioner O'Brien's name.
Bellingham has to be corrected.
Yeah, that's correct. Well, I'll make sure that gets corrected, but.
That was the other I caught. The other one's fine. So it's, we can move maybe what Mike suggested, Mr. Chairman, maybe move his.
Okay.
You know, how about that? Maybe move, how about this? I'd move that the commissioners endorsed the Mass DOT taking on Mechanic Street in Bellingham, dated February third, twenty twenty-one, on their certification receipt will be signed by the chairman with the correction of the page indicating the new chairman and returned at Mass DOT.
Second.
All right.
Motion made and seconded. To have the chairman sign for the commissioners with the correction on one document dated. February ninth, changed the chairman on a taking on Mechanic Street in Bellingham. February third, twenty twenty-one, and another one, an alteration layout, eight seven eight oh on Mask One, Wanaka Street in Sharon, dated April seventh.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Late on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Please clear that.
Next item.
Cal Minor.
Number three.
Hey, Cal.
Discussion with Superintendent Cal Minor, the Wallaston Recreation Facility. I see Cal on here. I know he was, yeah. Cal, can you hear us?
Yep, I sure can. Good afternoon.
Hi, Cal.
Hi.
We, we have a couple of issues, Cal. Why don't you open up and we'll go right in.
Sure. As you know, my assistant George Sullivan left. He went to WD Fields Golf Course in Brock. His base salary is, is less, but he was promised a lot of overtime. In the end, he'd make more money. What I would like to do is. Post it with the golf course superintendents of New England Association and the golf course superintendents association, Cape Cod. And I would like to post it for at least what George is gonna make, which is sixty-four nine oh five. That's. Grade. Fifteen, step nine. So, and what I'm looking for really is. Someone, some education, a BA or associate's degree. Experience turf knowledge, experience in irrigation, pesticide application, someone that can run the crew, has knowledge of the equipment, and very important knowledge of the game. So when I was, when I was hired in ninety-four, I had all these requirements, and the turf school was strong back then. I think we had forty-plus people in Stockbridge for turf. Last year, I think there was six graduates in turf. So there isn't that many qualified people left there right now. So. And I've, I've been looking around at the other postings, and Woodland Country Club posted a job at sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars, and they got one candidate. So I think it's gonna be hard to find someone unless we give them more money or. Or promise the superintendent's position in a few years if it's the right candidate. Also, the other thing, this candidate would most likely replace me in two thousand twenty-eight. So it'd be good to have someone in here for smooth transition.
Carl, it's nice to know we're gonna have you for a good long time. I appreciate that.
It's not that one, about seven or eight years.
In county government, that's forever, so I'm, I'm very appreciative.
There you go.
Commissioners, any questions? Is this the only subject, Cal, for you today? Or should, this is the first one? Cal, this is the only thing we have today for, okay. I'm gonna open it up to commissioners then. Let's talk this out. I mean, there's a process, I mean, soon, and I will ask Michelle to weigh in. When you say a grade fifteen, step nine. Give, give me an, tell me, I don't have it in front of me.
It's sixty-four thousand nine oh five.
Okay. What was, is that, is that comparable to what Mr. Sullivan was making?
It's exactly what he'd be making.
Okay.
Okay, right.
So it's in, it's in, it's in the budget book.
It is.
Okay.
And we're worried that it's gonna take a long time to fill, and you have, you're, are you doing the job?
I, I am.
Okay, okay. Commissioners, any comments? I'm gonna have Michelle weigh in. I know we have to. I don't know, we advertise for, for. Groundskeepers because.
Yeah.
We're trying to advertise for plumbing. We don't get anything back either.
Mr. Chairman, the money is in the budget. He's not looking for anymore. He's, he's leasing sources that are, I think, appropriate, you know?
Right.
So I've got no problem. I'd say proceed, you know? I've got, fine. That's fine with that, Cal, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I don't think we can run a golf course long term without a groundskeeper. I, I, you're a ground, Cal, you started as a groundskeeper, right, or?
I, as assistant superintendent, yes.
Okay.
With experience at Hyenas Port and.
Okay.
Other places, yep.
Yep. I'm a little, you know, I don't know what the, I mean, you, you know, that you know the territory much better than certainly I do. I don't know about the other commissioners, but.
Now, there, there is someone, Steve Doyle, who is on the crew right now, expressed interest in it, but he didn't, he doesn't have any of these requirements that I have. Asked for right now. I mean, if it worst comes to worst down the line, I'd like to do a long search. He would have to get his pesticide license right away and also get an associate's degree online for turf grass management. But he doesn't, he doesn't have the experience or. Or knowledge that I need right now to, to just get going. I'd have to train him on everything.
Okay. Commissioners can weigh in anytime, and I ask Michelle, because part of her many hats is human resources director. This is, there's a, a policy, I mean, we, so today's conversation is if we decide to just keep this position, of course, I think, we'd like to save money, but I don't think this is the place to save money. We need to allow it to go forward, right, Michelle?
Yeah, and we need to talk about if we bring this person in, the rate that Carlos suggests, and this person's gonna come in, he's not gonna get any steps. It's just gonna be a flat rate, come in at a flat rate and get coalers every year. So I just, that's not something.
Okay, all right. Well, if he finds the person, we can go over all that. I, I don't want a short change, I see that. I don't wanna, I mean, if he can't find anyone and you get someone without any experience, maybe we have to negotiate again on the salary, but I'd, I'd like to go forward today to give him the ability to, to go searching, and I'm interested in what the other two commissioners think.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just a thought. And again, I am not a golf expert, Cal. I, I golf maybe once in a blue moon in charity things, but I'll, I'll ruin the turf by flag. But I would say, is there any way, or could you explore maybe a retiree, somebody that might want to work part-time and put together a couple of people, and it might save us some money? And just, just a thought, if you can.
No, this is, this is a full-time position. Now, that needs to, and they need to have the knowledge.
Okay. Well, I said, I meant, well, no, I meant, I meant a retired groundskeeper who had retired and might want to just scale back and only work, you know, less hours or something like that, and then, you know, put it together with somebody else if you can't find anybody. That's all.
Right.
I really want, I want the knowledge, like, you know.
Right. And then, but, right, and certainly, certainly a person would be having knowledge, but there's not a lot of golf course superintendents that want to go back and work after they retire.
Okay, high level of burnout. All right, I got you. Just.
How about Bill Buckley to add some duties to his assistant directorship?
Here we go.
I, I love driving the carts. If I can drive the carts, I'm in.
Yeah, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So, Cal, I know that George hasn't been here that long, and when he was hired, I think you had a challenge finding someone back then as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and then you ended up training him, correct?
Right.
Okay.
I, I knew George. I knew his work ethic. He was interested in job. He was a golfer, and he was on the crew for five years, mostly summertime. And he, he just fit.
Okay, I just, I just wanted. Okay, I just, I just wanted to ask that question because I wasn't sure how that worked out.
Oh, it worked out well for both of us.
How long did George work here?
He was hired in 2015. And then five years before that.
Okay, okay. I'm fine. Just give Cal the green light to go forward. I, I don't think you're gonna find someone this week, but again, I know all about it. We're, we want to participate in, I commit today to. We know about it, and we're, I think the Commissioners agree, but I'll let them speak for themselves.
I'm fine, for what it's worth, I am. And I think we're getting background noise too, but I'm fine, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, last call on Superintendent Minus correction issue to go outside to replace our groundskeeper who's left to further his career in the city of Brockton. Okay, that's a yes then, unless we need to take a vote. I don't think that we do, but sounds good to us, Cal. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner.
On this. I might as well ask, it appears the season is going fine, the weather wise and everything else.
Well, otherwise it's been, it's been great. Yep.
Okay. Okay, well, we look for a big year. Thank you.
I think you've got one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving right along here. Number 14, to report on the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. I'm getting some interference here from someone.
That's the name, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to find the person.
Hold it.
Here we go.
Go ahead, Director Buckley.
Three, Mr. Chairman, yes, thank you. Just a quick side note, I just want to thank Carl. He's been really helpful trying to schedule the next advisory board meeting up at the golf course and making sure we get dinner and kind of go back to the normal pace of the meetings and the movement of the season. So that'll be good, and Paul was really helpful to to us early, late last week when we were trying to bring that together. As far as the report of the American Rescue Plan Act, I do have a couple of things to report. I did send to the Commissioners, Commissioner Collins and I worked on reformatting my letter a lot. I enjoy the word "that" and Commissioner Collins does not, which he's probably correct in. So we took out the word "that" about seven or eight times. So that's before you, if you have any further edits. Luckily, we did the last letter, so I can turn that around very quickly. It's a matter of cutting and pacing. It takes me about 30 minutes to get the letter out on that front. We have had a couple of really productive conversations and a few pieces of information that I have gleaned. I have been following along on all the NACO and Treasury Department webinars. Unfortunately, most of them are just repetitive, but we did hear now that there is no, and the Treasuries confirmed this, there is no drop dead deadline. It's not next week we must put in for it. That is not the case, and so we have some time and some breathing room, and that's an important data point and a relieving one, number one. Number two, this morning at roughly 10 o'clock, I had a very productive conversation with Heath Fair from the Governor's Office. He's the director of their federal funds. And he is going to have a kind of webinar with staff from all the counties as well about, just discussing the mechanisms for distribution through the Commonwealth as well as a discussion, and again, it's, it's two hours old, about the possibility of the state using their portion of ARPA funds for county courthouse HVAC issues. So that is something that very possibly could change the calculus if the preponderance of the, if the preponderance of the projects we're looking at could be done through another entities, pot of money, that they very well change where we, how the Commissioners may act going forward. Again, don't have all the data, but next week we should have a much better picture about what the state is thinking about the past. So I know that they've also, they have some concerns about reporting at the town level and tracking, regardless of which, you know, whether we take the money to and give a large portion to the towns or whether they do. So they're dogging Treasury themselves about the real requirements and hurdles for reporting this funds, and they're sharing that information with us as they get it. So that, that's an important piece. We also, on the same line, in my conversation with him, and we're gonna work with Rick Fitzpatrick. We believe that the, there is opportunity for HVAC replacement under CARES at the school. So that's something we can, if, if a project can be put together or identified and done by the end of this calendar year, we could reimburse that for CARES Act, and that's, that's gonna be part of our next discussion with the state because the reason there is a subset, that one of the guidelines for using ARPA funds is for COVID expenses not covered under CARES. CARES Act really was narrow, and it said that sort of the HVAC piece, you know, capital piece was really focused on schools and didn't include other municipal buildings, whereas this new pot of money does. So as we were kind of thinking about maximizing our ability to leverage federal funds, he encouraged us to look back at anything at the school HVAC related, which could be reimbursable, and that's gonna be part of a much wider conversation. That again, would be something we could do that wouldn't count towards it. You also have in your packet email and a spreadsheet from Joe Doria, who's explored the piece surrounding revenue replacement. Fortunately, as we talked about a little earlier, Registry's having a great year. Unfortunately, it's having such a great year that it disqualifies us from being able to, it's, I see Commissioner Stady laughing. It's, it's kind of like one of those, if you don't laugh, you cry type of things. We're doing so, and the kicker, if you looked at, Joe Doria worked very hard and quickly to make that for us. The statute allows for a 4.1% overage, and we even, we even exceed that. So you can't win for losing, as my father would say. But that's, that's another data point. So really, now what we're doing as a staff is, is moving on to really nuts bolt conversations with our state partners and looking at our needs and looking at how we can meet them and what's gonna count towards this, what isn't gonna count towards us. So that's, I think, we're moving into a much more active phase of this. And so those are my reports, disjointedly delivered, but I'm happy to ask any questions and so far as I can answer any questions.
Okay, why don't we go to the letter first?
Okay.
Commissioners, how do you feel about the letter? We, we, as we discussed last week, we want to reach back to the towns. They got a letter a couple of weeks ago. A lot of the authorship is the same, so there's a, there's a flow here, and if you think the letter is accurate, we'll get it out this week.
Yes, Commissioner Stady again for the benefit.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, you have permission, want to commend Commissioner Collins and Bill on a well-written letter, well drafted. Excellent. The only thing I would say politely, and I hopefully Bill will take this the right way, in light of the fact that we're gonna be having a new county director on board, I hope so, hopefully have that. I wonder if we should maybe not put in something about directing it to Bill, maybe just say, correct it to our office and leave it like that. I know Bill's the point man, I know that, but I also know that we have a transition with a new person, and maybe that might be the only change I would have. Otherwise, it's excellent. It's excellent. And on that whole topic, it's interesting, you know, this is town meeting season, Mr. Chairman, you know that. Many town meetings I was able to attend, including my own, and the topic right off the bat was from the Select Board and the Finance, when are we getting the money, you know? And it's hard because everyone's trying, everyone, we're all trying. Bill, the more, I also got Bill, I read Joe Doria's letter three times, and I said, I can't believe this. The better off we are, the worse off we are, you know? It's like, you know, and the more we know, the less we know, one of those things. But the point of the letter, well done, I'm okay with it. You want to go with it, go ahead. I thought the only thing was a courtesy to our new director, maybe fudge that a little bit, otherwise, that's fine. I think the more, get it out there, because again, they're out there, they're concerned, and I think we're doing a good job letting them know that. I agree with what everything said, 100%. Get it out there, it's fine. It's fine.
I'll make that edit, and then we'll get it out today.
Good job.
Commissioner Collins.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else that we need to discuss about the APRA funds right today?
And Billy, thank you.
We will get this letter out.
Yeah, thanks for the info. It was very helpful. It's helpful. I try to get it off NACO too, but you're on top of it. Just keep, keep it coming. Keep it coming.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next item is emergency items, I'm sorry, report of the county director, which is gonna ask, answer one of Commissioner Stady's questions, I believe. Michelle, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Chairman.
Hi, Michelle.
I only have a few things to update you on. I'm not sure if you are all aware of the temporary suspension of the open meeting law requirements, but I just wanted to update you briefly that Governor Baker announced that he filed legislation on May order that is set to expire on June 15th, when the state emergency was, will be rescinded. The bill filed by the governor today will extend these provisions through September 1st of this year. The governor said the extension will allow additional time to consider possible permanent changes to the open meeting law to provide for greater flexibility in conducting open meetings, electronic streaming, and similar measures. So I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that. And another thing that I wanted to update you on is the Massachusetts Legal Holidays. There has been a holiday added to the Massachusetts list. That's June 19th, has been added as a legal holiday, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day. So I will update the holiday if it will be permission to add this to our holiday schedule. If I have your permission, I update the holiday schedule and it to departments. And that's all I have for today.
One more question, Michelle. Are we ready to report on the county director?
I can, I did ask the person that we made an offer to if I could share it at the meeting, and I did not hear back from them. I would like to report that we did make an offer. It was accepted, and this individual will be started on June 14th.
That's the answer. Stady, we have our fingers crossed. We feel
Okay.
that he'll be a great addition.
You're a mind reader, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I want to get, I want to get down the road.
Johnny Costin, he put the hat on, and he would say what it was. I can't remember, but, you know. Yeah, that's it. There you go.
That was actually the first item on my list. I don't know how I stick with that one.
Okay, I remembered it. Don't worry. It moved along.
Michelle, did you say September 1 or December 1?
September.
September, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, I think I will include that discussion in your meeting, depending on the amount of the weight of next week or the week after meeting, and maybe we can toss it around after we familiarize ourselves with the Governor's new legislation, and then on or before September 1st, make that decision so we can set a date ahead and live with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
How about the registry thing?
That's next. Number 18.
16.
Emergency items and 16, emergency items and topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Earlier this meeting, we heard from a number of folks relative to the proposal proposed by Register Bill O'Donnell for employees' pandemic pay. And during that, at the end of that, Commissioner Stady said, we would like to, if we're gonna have some discussion where you want to do it, and I believe this is the proper time. I will say at the outset, as far as a lot of discussion goes, I did, I did talk to Labor Council, Michelle McNulty, yesterday. I'm familiar with a written opinion that she's given us, but she said today that we're interested in hearing everyone, we want to hear everyone, and you know, this always wages and working conditions are subject of bargaining. And any of these things that are considered additional benefits have to be bargained, and that we should take most of the stuff and take all of this undue advisement for a future meeting. And we need to negotiate. So I'm gonna, after having said that, open it up, Commissioner, if you had a question for the discussion among the Commissioners, and then we'll go from there.
Right. Mr. Collins, do you have to leave, by the way? I'm trying to be sensitive to your time.
Um, I think I can get out of here about 20 minutes. I think I'm good. If it's gonna go longer than that, I might have to take it by phone.
Nope, I'll talk fast. If you want me to go first, if I could.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, this is, again, Richard Stady speaking on this matter, and I think that I'm gonna reiterate what I said before. I think it's a great proposal. Again, it's coming from funds that are under perhaps the control of the Registry, funds that would be given to people who did exert an incredible effort. We all recognize that, that they worked under very difficult times. You know, we're feeling better now because we're all inoculated, vaccinated, and thank God, we're all coming out of this whole pandemic. But back when it was going on, it was pretty scary. It was a scary thing. Everybody was nervous. No one knew what was gonna happen. No one knew. And sadly, some people lost loved ones. So, you know, we can't forget that. We have to remember that they went into work, and our maintenance people went to work, and they kept our courts clean and our buildings clean. And it was very uncommon for John to give a report like he did today, where everything's fine and hunky dory. It wasn't like that. You know, we were always hearing about issues of probation and things like that. So, you know, I know we can't say too much because we've been told by council this has to be bargained. That said, and I know that they have a fear that if we don't get it done, it has to go to the county advisory board. I believe, I believe, and obviously I'm always open for correction, when I was chairman of the advisory board many times with Jack Dacey, sometimes the chair of the advisory board can execute a supplemental appropriation in an emergency. For example, when you're not meeting in the summer. Now, you can check that, that would be worthwhile checking, but sometimes the advisory board, even the FinCom could meet, and they could execute, and okay for a supplemental appropriation. Because what I'm saying, if we have to meet with council next week, Mr. Chairman, right? Okay, we could vote it and maybe get it to the advisory board in time for action, but if we can't, then we're stuck, because I don't think the advisory board meets again until the fall. So just an option to consider, and perhaps respectfully suggest to explore. Think in an emergency, by statute, Chair or the FinCom has the ability to execute supplemental appropriations. And my last comment, as I promised Peter I'd talk fast, what do we do about our other people? Again, I understand the need to take care of the Registry. I'm sympathetic to that. I support you. I understand it. And the maintenance people. But we had other people that, you know, worked very hard too and took some chances. So I'd like to see if we can help others, you know, if we can. Our teachers at the Aggie School and other people like that, and perhaps working maybe with the Registry of Deeds, maybe perhaps he'd be willing to work with us. I'd be open to discussion on that. Maybe there's something we could explore. So that's where I'm at today. I know we can't take a vote because council has told us not to. I appreciate, I couldn't answer them all, but that's where I am today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Krishna Collins.
Dick, I think you did a nice job. I think you summed up a lot of the things, so thank you. Right, my understanding is we have an executive session meeting with council on this issue on June 9th, 2021.
Yeah.
That was my understanding. I don't know if that's, that was, was my understanding anyway. So I think we have to go through that process. One of the things that you mentioned, Dick, was the FinCom weighing in. My understanding is that the FinCom does want to weigh in on this. So I want to hear what they have to say too, and I think it's a, I think this is a real issue of fairness, and as much as we appreciate all the individual departments that did exemplary work during COVID-19, Registry especially, and this is, you know, a gift from our register, and the registered funds, I appreciate that. But it really comes down to fairness. So it's not just the Registry, even though you're making all the money. It's not, it's not the administration, it's not the maintenance. Those are the three departments that are being looked at. But what about the engineering department that was right in the same building as the Registry? What about the golf course? What about the Aggie? And I think there has to be a level of fairness across the county that we'll have to grapple with and address. Because we don't want to, I don't, I don't think it's fair to single out just a few departments when others you know, expose themselves to do their job. And so I think, I think it all has to be looked at as one whole. You know, expose themselves to do their job, and so I I think I think it all has to be um looked at as one whole package. But I'll defer back to you, Joe. Those are just my thoughts.
Okay. Well, on the advice of council, I'm not gonna say a lot, but I do agree. It it's a. It's a laudable idea. Uh, it's important, but based on what I know, we're gonna have to give this a full vetting. As for weighing in with the advisory board, they are meeting on the night of June ninth. In Quincy at the golf course. I was, we received a letter from. Chairman Redden about five minutes of one today, I believe. If you don't have it, you'll have it before the day is out. It talks about a couple of subjects, that being one. Uh, another one about our uh new hires and promotions and how it works with the Abrams Group. I I in fairness, I'm gonna send it to you today. It will be on next week's agenda. So this subject will come up again next week. Uh, I'll revisit, Michelle, about. Absolutely wholeness to this date of the ninth, or if we could move it up, that'd be great too. So I realize that there is a meeting tonight.
You know, one of the things that's come up in the past, Joe, and maybe, and Dick certainly knows this, uh but um maybe you haven't been around it as much. So um, not everything gets done timely. You know, we've looked at uh non-union raises that have kicked in like well after the end of June. It's it's happened, and and so if this is an issue that can't be addressed by June ninth, that doesn't mean it can't be addressed by the next advisory.
I agree, but I'm I'm, you know, as as chairman, and I'm gonna try to keep it on schedule, and 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 even if we could move it up, because. It's important and. Would these folks deserve an answer, and and everything's coming together. First of all. The hirees, the budget was done last week, a new director who's one of the hirees or the hiree. I don't have a date on the Abrams report, but it it's all in, it's all related, and it comes down to. Right, the due process and the right process, and what's the fair thing to do? Again, uh. It's 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 a laudable idea, but uh like everything, once you start to look at it. You don't want it to come back to to haunt you, but I think we have the time to do it and uh. You know, if we have to have another, ask them to have another supplementary, another another advisory board meeting for a supplementary budget, we could, but I'm I'm not saying we're gonna do that. I was, I was hoping we'd get this done before that. I I'm not gonna say anything else, but that that's not to be construed that um, this is a very important subject.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, may I speak for a moment?
Register O'Donnell, of course you can.
First of all, I I appreciate the chair's comments of of, again, I recognize uh with with deadlines, June thirtieth is the end of the. Year and and uh, you know, revenues have come in, come in this year. But, you know, I'd just be remiss not to, when we're talking fairness, I I also think we should be cognizant of the fairness to the, you know, registry workers that. You know, have come here every day, uh have worked hard every day, kept the registry are open every day and operational. As well as the maintenance people that keep the building open and and have done uh yeoman's work and and trying to keep it clean and keeping ahead of the COVID. And and knock on wood, uh some of it I think was just luck, but uh some of it I think was good procedures, and also it was the. Willingness of the staff to cooperate. We we did not have one, you know, positive COVID test, you know, we we had. Quarantines and and appreciated the uh. Coronavirus uh extension and things that were done to get through um. This tough time, but in in the issue of fairness, I do think that that the, you know, it should be a timely, uh and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Chair. Of 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 just trying to do it. I recognize there may be issues. I've said I I'm willing to impact bargain. Uh, though I I'm not gonna revisit everything I said on May twelfth, but my dad climbed poles for the Boston Edison for thirty eight years, was a member of local three sixty nine. Um, I I I would, I I would think we could meet pretty quickly to impact bargain, something that is a benefit, uh not just to the registry employees. But to the maintenance employees and to the other departments that intersect. Um, I do have to address one thing. I mean, you know, I said it on May nineteenth, and and there's been these, you know, other departments. That's that's for the commissioners to decide. I I try to do something nice. I tried to do something that I think recognizes. Work that's been done by registry workers. I know DeAngelo's uh through their everyday heroes program recognized the registry workers. I know the Bar Association recognized the maintenance workers, uh giving them an award on Law Day. So I just think it'd be a nice recognition, and and again, I try to tie in people that intersect with the registry. Um, you know, if if, you know, if if you want to extend it to the engineers that that are in the building, we certainly can discuss it. Um, the the Aggie School, I just want to bring up one thing, and I guess I'll direct this question to Mr. Collins. Uh, Commissioner Collins, what what was the pay raise given to the Aggie School? Not the teachers, the teachers deserve whatever they get. They do yeoman's work with the students and the educational. You know, development that they do with those students at the Aggie School is wonderful, but I'm talking about. The maintenance guys and the cafeteria people who we like, and the administrators, the the secretaries, the heavy duty administrators. In 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 fiscal, um, you know, what what was the raise they got uh for fiscal twenty one?
They get the same rates that uh as the unions got at the Aggie. The non-unions got the same rate.
And and what and what was that number?
Uh, I I'll get it to you.
Well, I I recall Mr. Buckley at the last advisory board, it was a, it was a sheet. I have it in my head. And I could be corrected, and if Mr. Buckley wants to correct me, I thought it was three and a quarter. And the maintenance workers, the registry workers, the union, the non-union. Uh, here at the registry building, whether they were maintenance or registry, got two percent. So where was the issue of equity and fairness during that year? And again, no, I'm not trying to relive history, but.
Registry, you're you're out of line here. Um, you're talking about union negotiations, non-union negotiations. You are part of this board, you are the chairman of the county commissioners, and you know. That the negotiations that took place at the Aggie were entirely separate unions than. Uh, the registry union and the engineering department. You're out of line here, sir. Uh, I I'm I'm not gonna continue this conversation, other than give you the information with regard to the pay raises of the non-union employees. Uh, at the Aggie. If we can have that uh sent over to um Register O'Donnell, Michelle, that'd be terrific. All right, listen.
Thank you very much. Again, I was just trying to address this concept of fairness.
All right.
And and I'm doing it on behalf of certainly the registry employees, but I I I'll, if we're gonna debate fairness, I'm just trying to point out. That uh you we shouldn't be holding up a can, a a COVID pandemic pay. On truly deserving workers at the registry and the maintenance, and even the commissioners and the treasurer's office, but. Um, it it when when on on this guise of or on this issue of fairness. When during the last fiscal year, um. There did did not seem to be pay equity fairness amongst the the things, and enough said on it, I recognize we can agree to disagree.
I really, I really don't want to go down this path. I'm I'm positive. We hear you loud and clear, and 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 there are good points all through this, but I really. I don't want to be, I want, I don't want to get get into a uh. A back and forth today. At some point, we will absolutely. It when we're in the buy, at the bargaining table, and I will do everything I can to bring it as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
I'm happy to hear from everyone. My wife downloads everything and puts it in my chair every night, so I do see it. I knew that it was gonna be discussed today, and that that's the way we decide to handle it. I did seek. Opinions from my labor council, though. I can't tell you that I didn't. All right, that concludes the matter for today.
Will be brought in next week, though, right, Mr. Chairman? Labor council will be brought in next week for us. We'll have a meeting with her. Labor council.
Not next week.
With us next week, right?
It's not next week. It's the week after, Commissioner.
Oh, my God, that's right.
This is the twenty sixth. I don't, I said, I said, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to advance it, not put it off.
Right, right, right. No, no, my dates.
I can't promise.
I'm trying to hurry.
We're given the date of the ninth, and we took it, and now we're working on it.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
All this takes.
My bad, my apologies.
No, it's all right. It's all right. I don't want to miss, I just don't want anyone to get it wrong.
Right, right, the ninth, okay.
Okay. Any other items we didn't anticipate? Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Hi, hi. Good meeting. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Have a good holiday, everybody.
Have a safe.